So, welcome to the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. And we will get started with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any staff announcements or agenda changes?
Madam Chair, no, no agenda changes, but one announcement is recently I received a telephone call regarding a county planning commissioners conference which will be taking place sometime in October. They're going to send me the details, I'm told, I don't know if you've attended quite a few of them. It's a good orientation for new planning commissioners who are county planning commissioners. And so when I get all the details, I'll let you know. It's also open to family members of commissioners as well, so you can be an spouse, or grandkids, or whoever. So when I get all the details, I'll let you know. So that's coming up in October.
Thank you. Then we will open the general public comment period, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment in any item of within the subject purview of the planning commission, but not on the agenda today. Annette, is there anybody online?
We have quite a few people online, but I'm assuming they are for the item.
So if anybody would like to speak during the general comment period, could they please let Annette know? Raise your hand, or whatever you can do online. And nobody in the audience wishes to speak? Thank you. Then we will close the general public comment period and move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and today they are just minutes from past meetings. Is there any member of the public or the commission who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I have a few minor corrections to the minutes.
Sure. Would you like to go ahead and show?
On the meeting minutes for May 26, 2022, there's the first motion. Motion was made, and it needs to be by Commissioner instead of my Commissioner. That's all I have on that one. And then on June, the minutes for June 9, again, we got down to the motion, and again, a motion was made by instead of my. And then it says to continue this item to June 9, 2022. These are the minutes for June 9, 2022. And I'm not sure what meeting we continued, or what the continuance date was, but it's sometime after June 9. And then the final thing is under Commission Reports, right in the middle of the, of the middle line of Commissioner Ladish's report, it says a new water truck, and it should be a new water tank. That's what I have.
Thank you. Would someone like to?
I don't have any others, but I thought the motion to continue the item wasn't to June 9, obviously. I thought it was to continue it on calendar.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So that's what the, that's what the minutes, I think, should reflect.
Madam Chair, what item was that? Maybe I can, was that our GHG discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Also.
One second.
Anybody opposed? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with everybody here. That's exciting. We have no regular agenda items today, but we do have an action item, which the discussion will be led by our Director of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. This item is being brought to you because we have a request for a consistency finding, and this is in the PS, the Public Safety Zone. To kind of give you a background, some of the uses that are allowed in the Public Safety Zone include wastewater treatment facilities. If you look at section 1748-020 and 1748-3030 of the Planning Code, it does identify what some of those uses are. The reason why this item is coming before you is the use itself is not specifically listed in that particular zoning category. So, and the zoning code allows for the planning commission, based on an understanding of the proposed use and some of the existing uses that are being, that are currently allowed in that zone, to determine whether or not a proposed use is consistent with the uses in that particular zone. And I know that we have received a lot of correspondence, emails, and so on and so forth, regarding opposition to the request. The clarification I would like to make, and you know, this is neither here nor there, is that the planning commission is not approving a project today. What the planning commission is doing is finding that this proposed use is consistent with other uses in that particular zone, based on, you know, some of the code section 1748-030, you can see some of the types of uses that are actually allowed in the PS zone. So the proposed use is a biosolids facility that takes in biosolids and in tons, and mixes that with bulking agents such as landscaping, and wood chips, and so on and so forth. And then it goes through a process indoors that turns all that into compost, and then from compost to fertilizer. Now, the, the flexibility of having that use located adjacent to the CCWD facility is that it, it takes some of the material that CCWD would have, would have shipped out to other locations, and uses them. And at the same time, they have an end product. From what I understand, and from all the information that I have received from the applicant, all the work, all the, all the process of going from raw material to a usable grade A compost is all done indoors. And I know we've gotten a lot of calls or emails regarding odor, and so on and so forth. The applicant, I think, is on the phone. He would have been with us this morning, but he said he had, had some family issues, and he's going to be joining us, joining us by Zoom. In the audience today are representatives from CCWD, who would be able to answer some of the technical questions as far as the environmental effects of having that type of a facility next to theirs, and also the benefits of having it. We also have a staff member, Catherine Galino, who is our Economic Development Director, that also has some cursory understanding of what the project is. So when you look at the staff report that I had written, I, I think the commission has quite a few options, and I have fielded some questions from the commissioners, trying to clarify what exactly is this facility? And if we do go ahead and make that consist, consistency finding, what does it really mean? Now, we also have the LEA, our Emergency Operations, Emergency Management Services Department. I spoke with Lisa Medina this morning. She said she's going to be here to also answer some questions, you know, regarding what exactly is this? Are the substances that go into this aggregate that ends up in fertilizer? So the two determinations that a planning commission can make today is that the use is consistent with uses that are approved by right in, in the zone, which is making a consistency finding with section 1748-020, or that the use is consistent with uses that would be allowed by conditional use permit, which is, which is consistent with section In either case, the, the code stipulates that whatever finding the planning commission makes, those findings would have to be codified. So it's not just typically where we make findings of consistency, you know, we are not directed specifically to go ahead and codify them. In this particular instance, the code does stipulate that the planning commission goes ahead and codifies. So we will bring in all that, depending on the outcome of today's meeting and what your decision is, we will be coming back with a, a specific qualification process for 17.030, or 48030, or 48040. Julie, do you have any, any additions, deletions from what I just said?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think it might impact what how Julie answers. My understanding is that we could make a consistency finding that A, biosolids composting or some kind of manufacturing facility could be consistent and allowed by a conditional use permit, that we're not finding that this particular project is necessarily going to be considered consistent.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I, and we're not even really determining that the zoning code is being amended today either. This is, our county code does require this multi-step process when something is not listed in the PS zone, and so the consistency determination doesn't approve anything happening on the ground at all. And it doesn't even approve the zoning amendment. And so when the zoning amendment comes back, it would need to be following the zoning amendment procedures. That would not be a final decision with the planning commission, would also go to the Board of Supervisors. And even after that, unless this CUP, depending on what, what findings are made, unless the project itself is brought forward at the same time, a zoning amendment alone would not give rise to a, an actual project approval. So there's a number of steps still before we get to the discretionary determination of whether this project will go forward.
And there would be a SEQA assessment associated with both the zoning amendment and for the specific project if it was brought forward?
There would be a SEQA analysis of the zoning amendment for sure, regardless of what the decision is. If the decision was that it's permitted by right, as opposed to a conditional use permit, there would be no further discretionary approval. If it's determined to be a conditional use, there would be a project-specific SEQA analysis to determine whether or not an environmental document, or what kind of environmental document would be required, and along with a zoning amendment, SEQA document, possibly combined into one.
Thank you.
If I may to also ask, the CCWD facility currently operates under EIR. So even though the facility was built, I, I think sometime in the 80s or earlier than that, we, there have been additions to the facility to modernize it and upgrade it. So we have a record of at least some environmental documentation on that facility. Since the proposed use is also going to be on CCWD property, I, at this particular point, the applicant is requesting about 65 acres of land from CCWD, which is going to be actually adjacent to. So let me refer you to the second, the first figure one, the location map, that shows that area kind of in a green rectangle is where the facility is being proposed, and that is the CCWD retention tanks, and so on and so forth, just directly south of it. So that is how proximate the proposed use is. There's access road from Little John to the facility, and you know, some of the, so having said that, CCWD is in the audience today if you have any questions for clarification purposes. Also, I don't see Lisa in the audience yet, but she also might be able to answer some questions, which she has made herself for that. But so therein completes my presentation.
I have a couple of questions, and really just clarifications.
Yes.
So the property we're dealing with is already zoned public service.
It is, currently.
And so there won't be any actual rezoning of that property, no matter what happens here.
No, that wouldn't be.
But so we are today just deciding whether the proposed use in the abstract, in this county, would be consistent with the purposes of chapter 17.48, and if so, we are to initiate adding that proposed use to the zoning code in that section. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
That's it. But that's all we're doing today.
That's all you're doing today.
The next step is going to be, if we do that, would be a proposed amendment to the zoning code.
Right.
And then, or maybe simultaneously, a request by the applicant for a conditional use permit, if we do this under point 20.
Yeah, if you go down to 17, well, 030, yes.
Yeah, and so a request for a conditional use permit, which is sometime down the road, would necessitate an environmental review that would take into account the many concerns that have been eloquently voiced by the neighbors, the members of the public, such as Robert Flynn, Ralph Copeland, Christopher Doran, Nancy Henderson, Donald Jensen, Dee Hill-Mermans, Renee Kelsey, Vicki Newman, Melinda Hoff, Chad and Kathleen Strew, oh, and E. Navarrete. Is that right? That, that's when we would be considering the environmental effects, possible environmental effects.
Right.
Of putting that, that facility.
Right.
In that location.
Yeah, well, not only just environmental effects, but also the mitigation that could be proposed to mitigate some of those concerns. From what I understand, and I think maybe the applicant might be on, on Zoom, is most of the processing is actually going to be indoors, but there will be, there, at the, the end product, which is the fertilizer, would be outdoor, and you know, they would be, you know, kind of dispatched in, in bulk, rather than.
Yeah, but that, that's those sort of considerations about whether it's indoors, or it's outdoors, or odors, or whatever.
Right, right.
Traffic, everything.
Down the line.
Right, that's down the line.
As long as we think that this use in the abstract could be, or would be consistent.
Right.
With the purposes of the chapter.
Right.
Somewhere in the county.
Somewhere in the county.
In the, yeah, now we're in the future.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have to say, that's not how I was approaching this.
Okay.
Because this, the word that says upon findings by the planning commission that A, use is consistent with the purposes of this chapter, it can be added to the section. Well, what use? The use is precisely what's been put before us, in some detail. I took that to mean that we would look at this project, and we would, and the purposes of this chapter are for public purposes, public utilities, public agencies. Not a public utility, not a public agency. So then the question is, is this proposed use for a public purpose? Now, when I looked at this, it seemed to me that if the detriments of this project to the public outweighed the benefits of this project to the public, then it's not for a public purpose. That's what I thought coming into this meeting today, okay? That would then make relevant what exactly is the traffic load going to be coming in and out, which I think is going to be way more than 12, 15 trucks a day. Would make odor relevant, and it would be water, make water relevant, and a whole lot of things.
Yes.
Now, if I'm wrong about that, and it sounds like I'm the only one who thinks that way, maybe, then this is a whole different hearing than what I thought it was going to be.
I think the level of specificity of the information that we were provided, because this is the potentially immediate project that precipitated the discussion, led people to believe that the project was going to be evaluated today in detail, but really, we're only looking at, conceptually, could a biosolids operation of some kind be appropriate within the public service zone, with or without a conditional use permit, someplace in the county at some time, and does it, could that provide a public benefit? But I do think that because we were provided all this information, I went down the rabbit hole quite a bit.
Well, I think it's, it's, it's hard to.
I have a lot of questions. No, I, I was just saying, I was kind of in the same camp that you were. I have a lot of questions related to the project, not whether or not we're going to approve its ability to be done.
Yeah, I, I have very serious questions about the project.
Yeah.
And the environmental, I mean, I, I won't say I'm prejudiced against the project, but I have a very, very, very serious question of whether this is to be the appropriate place to put this project.
Right.
But my, my view is that we are only now looking to see whether this sort of use, taking biosolids that have been processed through a wastewater plant, and combining them with bulk, bulking agents to produce fertilizer, whether that use in the abstract fits within the purposes of the zoning chapter. But.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I, I have very serious questions about whether this is the appropriate place to have such a use.
If I may, just to make a clarification, now, one of the comments that, that we've received is that the, the PS zone is strictly for public uses, but when you see like hydroelectric power generation projects by public or private entities, sanitary and septic disposal facilities, which are not always by public entities, it could be by private entities, what I read from this is that the emphasis is actually more on the type of use itself, and not whether specifically it's for private or public use, because you could have private use that is also beneficial to the public. Now, CCWD felt that this particular type of use has a benefit to them, and they serve members of the public. So I think it's important that we at least get an understanding from CCWD as to how they see that synergy between what they do and what is being proposed. And, and I think that would better inform some of the decisions that the planning commission would be making today.
I've got one other question here. What zone, other than public service, would allow this kind of use, either as a matter of right, or with a CUP?
It would probably be in a manufacturing zone, maybe like an M2 zone. Yeah. So it would be a use that would be allowed. You know, the issue is that this particular, this particular project is so specific. You know, in the M2 zone, you have a fertilizer manufacturing facility, but it doesn't really, it doesn't really state how we get to the fertilizer end product. This particular project tells us how to get to the composting stage, and then the fertilizer stage. So, so that, that is the difference.
So I can see that there could potentially be a lot of benefit to the county with having a local way to make use of biosolids from our treatment plants, or potentially from pumping of septic systems, and also just other vegetative material, which I'm not entirely clear on exactly what that additional tonnage will come from. But, but that's not really a question for me today, it's just that I think it could have an environmental benefit, A, project could have an environmental benefit, a benefit to the efficiency of the operation, could reduce transport, perhaps, in and out of the county, depending on the specifics of the project. I, too, have a very, very long list of very, very specific questions about this particular project that I don't feel need to be taken care of today, but I would like to hear from CCWD on what you're doing with your biosolids now. I think they used to be used like for capping fill at the landfill or something.
And the landfill, if you may know, is almost at capacity.
Yeah.
So, you know, anything that takes something from the landfill, it's a benefit to them.
Remembering way back.
Yes, good morning, Directors. My name is David Wykoff, I'm Director of Operations for the Calaveras County Water District. Appreciate you considering this project, at least from a zoning perspective today. So just to give you a really high-level overview of what CCWD does with our biosolids, because they are a byproduct of the waste treatment process. So we have 13 wastewater treatment facilities throughout the county, four of which process biosolids currently. So, excuse me, what we do is, is we decant the wastewater from the waste facility, and we treat that, and then we treat that to a level that it can be disposed of either on-site, or discharged into a natural waterway. The solids are left over. So at four of these facilities currently, we have what are called belt presses. So we actually press the solids, and we try to squeeze as much water out as possible. And then those solids then are pushed into a roll-off, a waste bin. And we have a contract with Gambi Trucking, who used to take it out to the Rock Creek landfill, and dispose of the solids there. They actually haul it off to a landfill in Sassoon, it's called Potrero. So we take it off to the Bay Area. We analyze the constituents of the solids monthly, so they're checked for heavy metals and any other constituents that might be harmful, and they process those. And I'm not sure, Jesse, our Plan Ops Manager, do they process those for fertilizer, do you understand?
No, it's just land.
It's just land cover. So the, kind of the appeal to CCWD for this project is, is we've always considered a regional facility within, somewhere within Calaveras County is very important to us, because we could keep those solids in county, we wouldn't be hauling this material to the bay, and then it can be processed and used for fertilizer, for ag. There's a lot of options that are available to Class A or Class 2A biosolids, once they're processed. So if you look way down, within the next 10 years on our capital improvement plan, there is regional biosolids handling facility. So when North Bay Logistics reached out to CCWD about, hey, you guys know of possibly a location where we might be able to put one of these facilities? We said, well, let's go have a look at our copper facility, it's 200-plus acres, we have a wastewater treatment plant on-site now, we don't process biosolids in copper. However, everything that, the whole process is, is outside, we have nothing in a building. And so we're processing, we actually have an agreement with CV Developers, who takes the septicage from Town Square and Copper, and drives that to our waste treatments facility, and discharges that in an open-air septicage receiving station into our influent wastewater ponds on a daily basis. So that is currently happening. And so when we talked to North Bay about the opportunity here, it just seemed like a natural kind of relationship that, that could possibly proceed into being kind of a regional facility for everybody. That said, we have. That said, we have just very, from a very high level, uh, discussed this with North Bay. We don't, we don't have an agreement with North Bay, we don't have a relationship in any capacity other than that we support the project, we're proponents of the project, and we feel that it would benefit the community overall.
Do you have an idea of what kind of a market there is for the completed compost?
Yeah, so, from, from what I understand, and Jesse, help me out if you could, but, uh, ag is, uh, would really take advantage of the fertilizer because it's cheap. Uh, so, you could put this on orchards, crop cover, um, uh, ornate flowers, uh, what have you, so there's, and we're, you know, Highway 4 is very close to, um, a, a pretty heavy ag area, if you look out of county, and, and it also opens the door for, uh, some of the, uh, folks within the Copper area to be able to take advantage of, uh, different uses potentially for their property in the area. Uh, I know that CCWD some years ago was approached by a few different large, uh, property owners about ag and is there availability of water, uh, is there availability of, of, uh, any potential benefit, uh, that CCWD can provide? What, what could you offer us in terms of, of ag use? And, and at that point in time, it's really, I mean, it's an important one, but water supply, uh, this kind of helps put a feather in that cap a little bit. Um, and that's another thing that makes this, this site appealing just for CCWD in general, independent of a regional facility or an agreement with another entity, is that we also have a water treatment plant on-site also. So, we have water supply and we have the, the land available to make this, uh, use a possibility here.
So, if I understand what you said, this, your facility in Copperopolis receives sewage both from the CCWD sewer system and from septic systems.
That's correct.
And, then, according to EPA, biosolids are a product of the wastewater treatment, uh, process. So, when do you consider what you're processing has become a biosolid at the end of the, once it's separated from the water and...
That's correct, yeah. So, so, once we're able to, to take the solids out of the process, and then we can actually press as much water as possible out of those solids, and then we load those into a, a roll-off or a trash bin, so to speak, those are biosolids. Um, we had looked at, excuse me, there's processes where you could, and I think, I've looked at North Bay's proposal from a very high level, but I think this is similar. Um, we've looked at our West Point facility, is, was there a potential, and, and we moved on because, because frankly, it was expensive. Um, we could put biosolids in a greenhouse and heat those to, to the point that they become inert, and that's really what you're looking for, is to basically destroy any of the potential pathogens that are in those biosolids, then they are inert, uh, and then you could use those, uh, in that region of the county as well. Uh, so, so I would presume that this process is somewhat similar, it happens indoors, uh, it's heat-based, and, uh, really, I think the odor concern, and I totally get it, but really, the odor, to, in my opinion, odor is much more prevalent when you're talking about raw sewage, and you're talking about septage and off-hauling septage rather than biosolids. They're, they are going to smell, but not to the extent that raw sewage or septage would.
So, and as conceived of this project, when you would transfer the biosolids to the, um, to the facility we're considering today, or at least the type of facility, um, would that constitute toxic or hazardous materials?
It's not.
No, not as a biosolid.
There you go. So, Jesse said, not as a biosolid is not considered a hazardous material.
Okay, and, um, it, at the start of your procedure, do you consider the, the sewage, the raw sewage that you're getting, is that considered toxic or hazardous materials?
I would say yes, yeah.
Okay, so, it's somewhere in your process, before they become the biosolids that are the product of your process, they become clear of toxic or hazardous?
That's correct. And so, um, and not to get in too deep into the rabbit hole, but, so, at Copper, we have evaporative pond system, so, basically, we're accelerating the natural process, so we're allowing the, the water to decant off the top of the waste stream, and the solids settle into the bottom of the pond. So, we might not process biosolids two days a week, three days a week like we do at other facilities, but once every seven to 10 years, we spend about a week and a half processing biosolids because those ponds fill up. And so, the, the action still occurs in the area, in the region, it's just not on a routine, uh, basis.
So, I guess that's the reason there'd have to be, for the facility that's proposed, for it to be feasible economically, that's why you have to bring in so much material outside, because you're not going to be giving them biosolids every day.
Yeah, so, we, we, we create about 11 wet tons a week of biosolids.
And...
And so, we would bring all of our facilities, all the four, and there is about to be a fifth in West Point, all of the, those biosolids that are created and generated would go to this facility, and then Copper, right, would, would only happen until we change the process at the Copper Treatment Facility. Every five to 10 years, we would process those biosolids.
And, so, the, the stuff that's being brought in from your other, uh, units will also be a mixture originally of septage, waste, and, and stuff that's been through sewers?
Correct. Most of it would be conventional sewer, but there would be septage also, yes.
And, the, Section 17.48.030B uses the term sanitary and septic waste disposal facilities. Uh, in your opinion, does the term sanitary waste include all waste transported by sewer system?
That's correct, so, so, rather than having a, uh, I would call it a mixed system, which would be stormwater and sewer, a sanitary sewer system just excludes all stormwater.
That's what makes it a, quote, sanitary.
Right.
A strange choice of words.
Yes, I understand.
I, I've never realized that, I've grown up seeing manhole covers saying sanitary sewers.
Yes, right, yes.
Um, let's see.
I have a couple other questions.
You'll go ahead.
We'll go through his, and then we'll give everybody else a chance. So, the finished product can be used on food crops?
Yes, Class A biosolids, yes.
Okay, and, so, I tried to look up Class A biosolids, and they are not, there is no industry standard definition that I could find, it seemed to be specific to the jurisdiction or the state, which was a little confusing, so, anyway, and then there were double As and...
Yes.
And then there were other versions of them. But, uh, the other question is, could a, uh, facility like this process food waste in the future when we become required to collect and, uh, deal with compost food waste in the county?
From what I understand, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Tim, did you find your...
Yeah, uh, so, how would the biosolids from your unit be transferred to the, uh, North Bay Logistics?
They would be trucked from the other facilities.
So, it's just a matter of, uh, CCWD has enough property there to take care of that. If this unit were somewhere else, more out in the wild, it might be closer to your other facilities, but farther away from the Cabrabas facility.
Yeah, unfortunately, anywhere we would put one of these facilities, we're going to have to haul biosolids from one place to, to that location.
And where are your other wastewater treatment plants?
So, the four that are currently processing biosolids are the Arnold Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is just off Highway 4, um, just past Avery, uh, the Forest Meadows Wastewater Treatment Facility in, in that community, um, the Valacito Douglas Flat Wastewater Facility, which is just, just into Douglas Flat, right off Highway 4, um, and then the, and Lockington.
What was the last one?
A large one is Lockington, and it's located off Hogan Dam Road.
Okay, and, then are, are there other, uh, wastewater treatment plants in Calaveras County other than CCWDs?
There are, yes. Uh, so, and I, and I don't know to what extent, Jesse, you might be able to help me out a little bit, but I do know that there would be an opportunity for those facilities to also...
City of San Andreas.
Santa Andreas Sanitary District.
Murphy Sanitary.
Murphy San, yeah.
Okay, um, I think that's all I have for you. Thank you.
I have a couple. Um, the biosolids that you do process now, after you press the water out of them, is there really a market for those as they sit right there?
Help me out here, but from what I understand, no, because they, they're not inert, they still have pathogens in them.
All right, all right, guys, apparently I'm having a bad hair day. So, the biosolids, after they come off the press, there is, uh, opportunity that they can become for like roses, uh, I know there's a big rose facility out in, I believe, Harold, near Galt, that will land-apply it, um, but like David said, there's not much use for it. Land cover, but that's for big landfills and that type of scenarios.
Well, what would you have to do to get the pathogens out of it?
Basically, you got sterilized, so you got heated up enough to kill all the pathogens to make it inert like Darrell, or Damon said.
And I'm assuming there's not enough of a market for that to justify the expense of getting it heated up to get rid of the pathogens? Is that me right?
It, it takes, it takes some, some energy and some money, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, I need to be clarified, uh, I need clarification, I mean, the biosolids that would be going to the, uh, North Bay Logistics Facility would be inert, or would, would not be toxic or hazardous materials? Is that the same?
They're two different things.
Is that, that's two different things?
So, they're not inert, but they're not technically classified as hazardous material.
Okay.
Yeah, so, they still have pathogens in them, there's, they're still regulated, there's still only, uh, you can only use them for certain, uh, things, or certain processes or applications, but they're not completely inert, you know, put it in a bag and called fertilizer.
Uh, okay, okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a lot of questions, but I'm finally going to be in the next...
That you need answered today, yes. Corey, anything you'd like to ask today?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Are there any members of the public online?
We're going to have the applicant.
That, well...
There's quite a few, and the applicant is online, Mr. Horton, if he would like to speak.
Certainly. Do, uh, is there anything that the applicant would like to say?
Yes, I'm online, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you guys for, uh, considering this a very important project. I, I'd like to make a few comments, um, if possible. I have an email that I sent and received from a gentleman by the name of Doug Carson on May 25th of 2022, and in the email, a gentleman was asking me about the, uh, the standards for the, the air control, and I responded to him, uh, with an email that I have from one of the breakdowns for our project breakdown, and in short, what we discovered was that the CCA PCD finds a major source as 100 tons per year. And, uh, we proposed, uh, quite a few facilities, or two facilities, and I'll get into the, the discussion of that in a little bit, but what we discovered was that the standard that has been set for VOCs, which is, uh, the volatile organic compound emissions, uh, by the district and by that area were, uh, from what we gathered, uh, 10.5 VOCs is what we found, and our facility, uh, comes in much, 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 much lower than those standards, meaning, this facility that we're proposing is a state-of-the-art facility. Uh, the minimum facility that we propose is a $4 million facility that's considered a CASP, and as the gentleman mentioned, these compounds, uh, as they are being produced right now by the county, are, uh, are not in a stable state. They have no use, no purpose for no one, it has to go through a process first. So, we proposed two facilities, one of them will cost, just for the equipment alone, $4 million. The second facility is a $9 million facility, and so, the first one is what they call a CASP, covered air, ster, covered air, uh, aerated static pile, and that facility sits on what they call bio, uh, pads. And these bio pads, uh, produce an airflow and a certain dynamic that promotes not only the heat that's needed to make these compounds usable, but it allows for the breaking down of these compounds so that they can become useful. In other words, the biosolids, as they come out of the facility, as CCW is processing them, don't have that process to it yet. The second process that we propose, the $9 million facility, which would, uh, total cost be well over $15 million, is what they call an inter vessel, and both of these are enclosed, uh, processes. Uh, the first facility is, uh, everything's processed in what we call a tipping area, it's all covered, uh, steel bars that we would build, and everything would be processed inside, and once that material is processed, mixed inside, it would then be taken out and put on these, uh, bio pads to further process. Now, prior to this technology, it would take you, uh, about three months to get this process done. That's, that's what we were doing forever in the country. But with this new technology now, this process has been broken down to a, a three-week process. So, you go from taking these, uh, very volatile processes and coming out with a highly usable, uh, product, uh, in about, uh, two to three weeks. And so, um, I also want to talk a little bit about the benefits of biosolids, because I think it's very important that you all understand that biosolids are a very, very highly beneficial product. Uh, some of the benefits of biosolids is, first of all, it's a natural source, and it's beneficial to the planet and people. We all produce this waste, regardless of, you know, where we live, we all produce this waste, and right now, I think it's important that we get a grip on where our waste is going, um, because, um, well, there's issues. This, this waste, if, if not processed correctly, ends up in water supplies, which is a huge problem in California right now, we're losing our natural waters because of caking, these biosolids are contaminating groundwater, and I, I think in Calaveras County, you guys depend highly on groundwater sources, and, uh, once you, uh, destroy your groundwater, it is, it is, it is, it is an impossible process to correct. It is, it all, I mean, I, I don't know how they correct groundwater, uh, once it's polluted, and so, uh, we've seen instances where they're over-nitrating with these biosolids, and the plants can only use so much of it, and what it doesn't use will seep down in the soil if these biosolids are not handled properly, but let me, let me explain a few of the benefits. So, one of the main benefits of biosolids that we're going to produce at this facility, we're going to, we're actually going to produce two products. Uh, it's a three-stage perma-compounding facility is what we're going to build here, it's allowed. What that means is that we're going to take these biosolids from CCW and surrounding communities, we're going to put them through our process, and in that two, that three-week timeframe that I just mentioned, we're going to come out with a compost. So, we're not just going to stop there, uh, because as the gentleman mentioned, uh, there's a Class A compost, but what we're going to produce is what they call a Class A EQ compost. That is a compost that you can use on organic farming, on any farming operation, it is the highest possible compost you can produce, so, let me repeat that again, it's a Class A EQ compost that we're going to produce, and how we're going to produce that is, well, when we go through that first stage of composting by putting these things on this, these bio pads... And how we're gonna produce that is, well, when we go through that first stage of composting by putting these things on these bio pads for the three weeks, then we take it from there and we put it through another vermicomposting filtration stage, which, which what we do is, is in short, we take that compost material and put it in barn bins. We combine it with food matter, if you guys have food waste or any kind of organic material. And this is separate from the initial combining of the material with bulking agents. So, the biosolids have to be combined with a bulking agent to complete the first process to produce their compost. What we're saying is, well, we're gonna take that process because we wanna take it to another level. We wanna produce something. And this is something that is, most facilities just stop with the compost. But what we see a need for is to produce vermicomposting, which is called vermicastings. This is the most sought-after fertilizer in the world because it is a complete source of nutrition for plants. Not only for the plants, it restores the soil. And so, what I wanted to do was just mention a few of these benefits so you guys can understand the importance of this, 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 this process and these biosolids, if they're put together and produced properly. This can be a highly economical situation for this area and produce a lot of good jobs for a long time to come. But, so, it enhances soil health. It's a natural alternative to synthetic fertilizers. Biosolids enrich and condition the soil by returning the nutrients inorganic matter back to the land. Which inorganic matter the biosolids benefit the land by helping the soil retain water and nutrients. They also improve the soil structure, enhancing its resilience to erosion and drought. So, in other words, you know, when you lay this stuff down, you don't need as much water as you do on your plants because the soil is retaining moisture. It's retaining the nutrients. The second thing they do is they help you grow better crops. When you add this nutrient, it improves the soil quality and it prompts the plant's benefits. Biosolids contain all sixteen elements essential for plant growth, including nitrogen, phosphorus, and a variety of micronutrients. The plants absorb these elements immediately. I mean, immediately. It's almost, as soon as you put this stuff down, and with the vermicomposting, you, you, you can only apply 20% of that vermicompost. You don't even need a lot of the vermicompost. You just need a small amount. Anything over 20% is inert. It doesn't have an effect. So, you can, you can, you can apply all the vermicompost you want, but it only, the plants only require, the most taken uptake is 20%. So, but it provides a consistent nutrient supply that helps plants thrive through the growing season. It's by climate change, by helping plants grow. The biosolids play a supporting role in removing the carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and returning it to the soil. Because they're full of organic matter, they add to the significant amount of carbon directly to the soil as well. And much of the carbon remains sequestered in the soil for long periods of time. The more using biosolids offset, what's more, in other words, these biosolids offset carbon emissions associated with synthetic fertilizers. It also produces renewable fuel. It prevents erosion and runoff. It allows to reclaim depleted land. So, if you've over-farmed an area, if you've mined something in there, if you've had a very, let's say you had a place where you had some kind of operation there and they put some, so remediation is needed in the soil. Biosolids can help remediate soil, and there's a lot of evidence behind that. And there's a lot of financial benefits to these, this natural fertilizer also because of the cost savings. As the gentleman mentioned, it's much, much cheaper, much, much cheaper than synthetic fertilizers. For anyone who's looking to get into organic farming, or even if you're doing a non-organic farming, this is much cheaper. When I say much cheaper, we're talking about 50% decrease in the price that you would normally pay for a fertilizer, for a synthetic fertilizer. And I think it's important that the community also understands there's a lot of misconceptions about biosolids. There's been a lot of negative energy put toward biosolids because people believe of this odor problem. And that's why we're investing the money that we're gonna invest in this facility because we don't want a community to have odor, and they have technology now to work. You don't, you don't have to produce odor with biosolids. As I mentioned before, prior to the aerated static pile technology, yeah, this stuff will sit out for three months and it will stink up the whole place. But when you put it on a bio pad, what that bio pad does is, it's a continuous airflow system. So, the air is flowing up from the bottom of the pads, and the system that we propose is a water-balanced system. So, this system that we're gonna put there, it recycles because biosolids, these covered air, aerated static piles, they produce a lot of water in the process of processing these biosolids. And so, water balancing means that we recycle all the water back from that process. Meaning runoff or anything that might potentially come from the static piles is all recaptured. And some systems that are below grade, which can be also found in the design site documents that I submitted to the gentleman also. But I think it's important that we understand that this is the future of being, of processing waste. And I think it's important to understand that this is an opportunity because, as the gentleman mentioned, they're discarding these biosolids now. They're throwing them away at a cost that is probably very significant. The taxpayers and the people in that area gotta understand that this is, this is something that's great because now you get to recycle your own waste and turn it into a high-organic fertilizer, a natural fertilizer with an unlimited amount. And so, you know, synthetics are something that we don't control. There are foreign countries that control whether we, the price of our ability to produce food. And so, having this also contributes to food security. You know, as we see inflation and the cost of food is much higher in the stores now. And part of that is because the price of fertilizer. And the people who we buy fertilizers know you don't have another option. They know that we've gone down this train and this road on these fertilizers, and if they wanna jack the price up, it's like the mafia. What are you gonna do? So, I think it puts the Calaveras in a position to become a leader. A leader not only in the state of California, which is a large state, but in the United States for how we do business and how we process our waste and how we make best use of the waste. I think the gentleman also from CCWD made a very important point in that they don't produce enough right now to justify building a $15 to $12 million facility. It doesn't justify it for us either. That's why it has to be a regional project so that we can all benefit from it, so that we can, we can find a way to, you know, create a solution. And I think anytime you become a place or, or, or a community where you present solutions to the world, opportunities are gonna come knocking on your door. As the gentleman mentioned, ag is really big out there. But if you, if you have opportunities to say, hey, we don't just, you know, have land here. We have very viable sources of highly beneficial biosolids also that we can also provide for you. Then a lot of people are gonna come, not just for ag, but for other reasons. Because when you become a leader in opportunity, in creating opportunities or creating solutions for problems, it brings opportunities. And I think what, what really I like about Calaveras is that it's positioned strategically in a great place because you're an hour away from Sacramento, or less than an hour from Sacramento. You're not that far away from the Bay Area. And the Bay Area's run out of capacity. And as the gentleman mentioned, there are quite a bit of waste facilities already in the area, both public and private. So, the county is already in a public-private kind of posture to where they're partnering with organizations to help and assist. What we saw here is an opportunity to where, okay, well, Calaveras has land. They have plenty of ag. They don't have the biosolid infrastructure, but they're located in a position where if we get the facilities set up, it's not gonna be hard to get some stuff coming in from the region, whether it be Sacramento, whether it be a neighboring county, whether it be from the Bay Area. And I think another thing I wanted to emphasize too is that, I wanna be very clear that what we're doing is, is this facility is proposed for 50,000 tons per year. And so, what that means for me is that that's 137 tons per week. That's 6.8 truckloads just for the material. We were very conservative in saying 15 to 20 truckloads, but I, I think we'll be much, much more lesser than that because, well, we're also gonna bring in bulking agents, which we would think there would be also bulking agents there in the region. And bulking agents, what I mean by that is, you know, whether it be woodchips, scrap clippings, pine needles, tree waste. These are all things that are, that have to be combined with these biosolids in a mixer to create the carbon-nitrogen ratio to begin the composting process. In other words, you have to mix these biosolids with bulking agents. But when we look at what that transportation looks like, and, and I know there are some concerns about traffic, but these trucks are also gonna bring jobs for local truckers who may be in that area, who may be independent contractors who may wanna work with us. We're looking at creating at least 10 jobs just for the facility. And then for the composting and the fertilizing, that's a whole nother opportunity. That may create another 10 jobs also. And these are good-paying jobs, you know, $100,000 per year plus kind of jobs. You know, just to be an operator at this facility is gonna pay you $40, $45 per hour. And these are jobs that I think Calaveras County need. I think the people in this area also need this ability to be able to take whatever little waste that they are making and set an example, even though there's, there's, the capacity is not there. But I think the effort of moving forward and establishing this kind of facility, it presents a lot of benefits. And, you know, like I said, what he's saying regarding biosolids is just, it's mostly, I think, comes from vegetation because, here's the thing.
Sir...
One of the reasons why we also wanna do the vermicomposting is because vermicomposting removes all...
Can I interrupt you for a minute? I, I think that the commissioners have probably heard enough about the details at this point, but I'd like to give them an opportunity to ask you some questions.
Yeah, sure. Sorry. I didn't mean to go on.
You can hear your passion.
Thank you for stopping me because I was still a bit over here if you hadn't stopped me.
This is Commissioner Ladish. I want to make it clear that my questions today, do you only go to whether the proposed use would be consistent with the purposes of Chapter 17.48? I will not be covering all the complex and serious environmental questions that would arise if applicant were now asking for a conditional use permit to construct and operate the proposed facility at the site in Copperopolis. Now, if one not occurs, I'm sure you'll be getting a lot more questions from all of us, giving full consideration of the types of concerns that have been voiced by the residents. So, my question would, consistently with what CCWD said, would you characterize as biosolids all the waste that you will be receiving at your facility?
Will you do on what? I didn't, I didn't hear that last part.
Is everything that you're gonna be receiving at your facility considered to be biosolids?
Well, yeah. What we're gonna be receiving is raw biosolids, which are on inert. So, they're still alive. They have pathogens in them. And so, yeah, that's correct.
They'll all be a product of wastewater treatment process, correct?
I think he's asking, will you also be having trucked in the other bulking agents like vegetation?
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
With the actual material, the waste material that you're receiving, not the bulk material, they will all be products of the wastewater treatment process somewhere?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely, they will.
Okay.
For the, for the biosolids. That's right.
And, and the final commercial product will also be categorized as biosolid, correct?
No.
No, no. Our final use project products are gonna be two products. We're gonna produce a compost from the biosolids, and we're gonna produce what's called a verma compost. So, there are gonna be two products. I mean, a compost and a vermacast, which is a fertilizer. So, there's a casting that we're gonna produce and a compost.
And at what point in your process does something become not a biosolid?
Well, the minute we take that product and add it to the bulking agents and put it on the bio pad, after about three weeks of sitting on that pad, it's no longer a biosolid. It is compost.
Is that also the point where it becomes inert?
Yes, sir. The day it goes onto that pad, it's, that process starts. And about three to four days after it sits on that pad, it's no longer, it becomes inert.
Okay, and is no longer a biosolid, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, all the waste that would be, the waste that would be trucked into your facility from elsewhere would have been processed to the same extent as the waste that you've received from the Copperopolis CCWD facility, correct?
Well, no, that's not the case because, well, in some cases, what they're doing is, some facilities are taking these biosolids and they put them through an aerobic digester, okay? CCWD doesn't do that, but there are other places that, when they take the biosolids, the sludge settles. And as the gentleman mentioned, that sludge, they put it through a digester, and then that digester heats it up. So, for the most part, some, some people put it through aerobic digestion, some people don't.
So, some would be more processed than what you'd be getting from the CCWD Copperopolis facility. Is that correct?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay. And you would not consider any of the materials that you would be having at your facility to be toxic or hazardous materials? Is that correct?
Absolutely not. Zero toxin.
Okay. And does North Bay Logistics currently have other facilities that are similar to the one proposed for Calaveras County?
No, we do not. This will be our first facility.
Okay. Are there other facilities in California that you're aware of that have been operating for a while?
Well, sir, that's the issue. There's only six of these facilities right now in the entire state of California. I'm aware of one in Napa, which I have visited. That's doing very similar to what we have. But there's only six of these facilities in this entire state. And that's an issue that we are also up against as a state is that with the passing of SB 1383, by 2025, there's supposed to be 100 of these facilities in California, and there's only six. So, we would be seven.
Okay, lucky seven.
That's right.
What federal or state permits would you have to obtain in order to operate this proposed facility?
Well, as far as I know, once we get through the CECL process, I think there's a process for Cal Recycle. And there's no federal permit. There is a state permit through, I think, Cal Recycle, and that's it.
And do you know what you have to show in order to obtain such a permit?
Well, first of all, we gotta be, we gotta have a site. We get approved and be able to have a place to do business. And then they come in and they do their inspection. And for the most part, it's, as long as we can get through the standards regarding, you know, the resources board and the CECL analysis, that's, as far as I know, that's all that's required to get these facilities set up.
And have you considered other locations in Calaveras County for this facility?
I have not.
Okay. And this is one that maybe I'll have to repeat to you. Would you agree that the proposed use, we're supposed to, if we find that this use would be consistent, we have to characterize the use in some way. So, would you agree that the proposed use would be correctly stated by adding something like the following language to Section 17.48.030? And this would be proposed language that would at least serve as a model. "After wastewater processing, public or private facilities that would conduct further processing of biosolids and combining them with bulking agents to produce grade AEQ compost and fertilizer." Is that okay? Does that sound okay?
Yeah. So, in essence, what we're doing is, we're just taking this process that's already occurring to another level. We're taking this waste that any, all facilities in wastewater producing this biosolid sludge waste.
I'm gonna interrupt you. Just if, if there's a next stage to these proceedings where the county is proposing an actual amendment to the statute, would that... an actual amendment to the statute, would that language that I read to you accurately enough characterize the use that you're contemplating?
Uh, can you, can you repeat the use one more time? It sounds pretty consistent. Can you, can you clarify it one more time, sir? I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly.
This is, "After wastewater processing, public or private facilities that conduct further processing of biosolids and combining them with bulking agents to produce grade A-E-Q compost and fertilizer."
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think another word could be used, the sludge is, is another word that they use for, uh, but yeah, yeah, that sounds pretty accurate, sir.
Yeah, well, as I understand, EPA, uh, uses biosolid interchangeably with the term sewage sludge.
Yes, sir.
So, I think using one of the sufficient. Okay, those, those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Rooster, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
I, I have a question. I think, uh, most of us have heard of fertilizer plants having fire or explosion hazards, and I'm wondering if there is any hazard associated with this process.
Well, um, I think we live in California now, so we have a fire season. I think the, whether we have something going on or not, that's an element that we're dealing with. As far as this facility, it doesn't present a particular fire risk that's extraordinary beyond, uh, uh, in other words, the, the practices that we're going to be implementing on this facility by taking these bulking agents and sitting them on a, a, uh, uh, what I consider a biopad, uh, there's going to be a lot of irrigation and water in this process. Uh, we use, uh, about, um, fifteen hundred CCWs, uh, of, of water, uh, per year. And so, it's, it's a pretty, uh, what I consider, uh, non-dry process. In other words, when you take this solid and you set it on that pad, the air's flowing through, and you have water, there's sprinkler systems that we're going to have that we set on top of these piles that put the water on the top to make sure that the piles also have the proper hydration. So, from the actual process itself, uh, there, 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 there's no fire hazards that are being presented unless someone's, um, you know, being, uh, absolutely careless in, in the operation, which we, we don't proceed. But, uh, as it stands, there, there are no, uh, no fire hazards as it relates to the processing of the biosolids. The pads that, that we're, uh, the, the facility that we're going to build with these biopads is, is, it's a state-of-the-art facility, and it's, it's, it's the safest kind of operation that you're going to be able to employ, whether it be fire safety or, uh, uh, any kind of, uh, issues you may, you may have regarding safety. These facilities are very safe as, as, as we're going to build it and we're proposing to build it.
So, no hazard associated with storage of the final fertilizer product?
No, because our fertilizers are, uh, the verma casting is pretty much worm proof. It's, uh, it's, 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 um, it's not fertilizer in the sense of synthetics. Synthetics propose, uh, uh, quite a bit of, uh, fire danger. But these, uh, verma castings are very stabilized, they're very moist, uh, the chances of verma composting catching on fire is, is almost none to exist in. You can set this stuff and set it in a corner for, for years, and, uh, it, it just, it's not a volatile fertilizer. And meaning, this is all natural fertilizer, similar to a cow manure or a horse manure, with the exception of this being, uh, worm manure, as, as, as I might say. So, it's, it's a very, uh, stable fertilizer, all natural with no synthetic. So, you can, uh, store this stuff, uh, without any, any hazards of catching on fire.
Thank you. That, that answered my question. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Lisa, would you like to talk?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I'm very excited about this project. Corey came to us about three months ago with the proposal of this composting facility here in Calaveras County. I was all over it, um, and worked with CCWD. We actually did tour the Rock Creek landfill probably a month and a half ago, and in having conversations with his water needs, we thought, wow, CCWD. He was also touring CCWD's site in Copper where they have wastewater that can be used as part of this process. So, again, before you is a determination. Um, I find that this is, in my mind, very consistent with the use, the public service use that is happening now at the CCWD site. This is simply a further refining of the process that they do at CCWD's site now. So, um, from an economic development standpoint, I think this is a great project. It's a clean project. It provides great benefit to our communities, and will provide some jobs. So, that's it.
Thank you. I'm at, is there anybody online?
Yes, there is. Um, if we'd like to let Lisa Medina from Environmental Management speak now.
Good morning, respected commissioners. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello, how is everybody today?
Good.
Bye.
Um, so, I just want to, uh, just reiterate, you know, my support, you know, in Kathy Galeno's comments, um, this is, it sounds like a very interesting project, and if done correctly, efficiently, effectively, I think it could benefit, uh, Calaveras County. Uh, but that is all I have to say for right now, and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else online?
Yes. Supervisor Follendorf, would you like to speak? I have nothing to say. Right here. Um, Mr. Minkler?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to comment, um, and appreciate the commission taking this up. Um, I, I agree with, um, Kathy and Lisa's comments. I also want to thank Gabriel for coordinating with us, um, and, and reaching out to us earlier in this process. I think, um, I'm, I'm optimistic about his, his leadership there and our coordination. Um, in, in general, I think, uh, as Damon already mentioned, we, we wouldn't need a project like this in Calaveras County, um, for a lot of reasons, and a lot of those reasons that, that Damon and Corey already addressed. I want to clarify, the CCWD board has not taken any action on this item, so we still have questions, just as you guys have questions, some of the same questions, I'm sure. Um, it's still working through our process as well. Um, and, you know, but it seemed to me logical to co-locate a project like this with a wastewater treatment facility, um, that, you know, where, where we have land available, um, and it, you know, it's not going to, I don't think it's going to make any of the odor that's out there any worse than it already is, um, from my understanding of these processes. So, it seems like a logical location, um, and, and it seems like a great project, but as I said, we still do have some questions that we're going to need to answer as we work through the process and structure in agreement with North Bay Logistics if it moves forward. Um, but in general, yeah, I can say we're very supportive of the project, and, and we really need a project like this in Calaveras County. Um, and I'll offer, you know, just for what it's worth, um, and it's obviously the county's realm and the county's determination, um, but from my perspective, this is a landfill. Um, you know, it's, it's a landfill that treats a certain type of product. It happens to also be able to generate beneficial byproducts at the end of the process. Um, and it's, it's not all that much different than the wastewater treatment facility that we have out there, where you have, um, you know, a process for treating the septic and the sewage that comes in, and by the time the process is complete, we're producing clean recycled water at that same, uh, at that same location. And so, it has a lot in common with a wastewater treatment facility in terms of process, but it's really, it's a landfill. So, um, there may need to be some clarification in the zoning code, um, or it could, I, I think there's a, you know, there's an argument to be made that it could fit within the existing, um, the existing language there. But, um, thank you all for taking this into consideration and happy to answer any questions if you have any other questions for CCWD.
Any questions for Mr. Minkler? Anybody else?
Yes. Go ahead, Colleen.
I might point out that Colleen Platt submitted on behalf of My Valley Springs, um, the, a couple of page letter about this project.
Seems like we might be having a, a problem.
Okay, let's, let's go to Melinda Hoff next.
Sure.
We also have a letter from Melinda Hoff.
Yes.
I can't hear them, I mean it.
I, they need to unmute themselves.
Okay.
I just pushed a button, did that help?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, good. This is the first time I've done this on this way. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, this is Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com, and, uh, we did send her a comment letter yesterday. I hope you had a chance to read it. Uh, we appreciate you taking this issue very seriously. This is a, a big decision to add another use to, um, the public service zone. Um, it sounds like you are quite aware of the, of this decision and, um, addressing the appropriate concerns. Um, we brought up the concern whether this is really a public purpose, so you need to determine that. It seems it's clear it doesn't fit under point two oh, but possibly under point three oh, conditional use permit if you feel the, um, it fits into that purpose. If you do decide it to benefit to the public and a use consistent with the public service zone, we would ask you to consider that that would be a zoning amendment and a zoning ordinance changed, and consider the cumulative impacts of that change to the zone, and either do an environmental impact at that point when you're looking at the zoning amendment, or some sort of environmental document to look at the change and the impacts of change in the zone. And then, of course, at, uh, the later point when a project does come forward, uh, there would need to be, um, an environmental impact report on the specific project and the specific location to see what the negative impacts from, um, that particular operation, wherever it is and wherever it may be. And just please, and it sounds like you are, are going to be doing this, and that is just what we're asking, that you do your due diligence, um, and the environmental, um, you know, stakes here and the impacts of, uh, adding this project to the zone, and then when the project does come forward, to make sure it goes through a complete environmental review. So, uh, thank you very much for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we try Melinda again?
Melinda, you can speak now. She's still here, but she, she's not unmuting herself.
So, to anybody online waiting to speak, when Annette says your name, if you could unmute yourself so we can hear you, let's try to get Amanda back. I'm sitting in her seat, so we'd like to hear from her. Okay, is there anybody else online?
There is not.
Okay, last call for anybody else who wants to try one more time to unmute themselves and let us know what you're thinking. So, with no response, we're going to close the public comment portion of this hearing and have further discussion by the Planning Commission. Okay, folks, who wants to start?
Well, I'll start. I mean, I, I can see a fair argument that if CCWD were to just propose adding a facility like this to process the sludge that it produced, it would be clearly for a public purpose. Um, it might even be part of sanitary and septic waste disposal facilities under the code as it now sits, except for the further processing with the addition of bulking agents or whatever else, food waste or whatever. That what's, that's what it seems to me makes it not already covered and permitted by the code. And given the fact that we are not considering the propriety of this particular project at this particular location, but only the general question of whether or not this is
Bless you.
proposed use is consistent with the purposes of the ordinance being a public purpose, um, I think I, I have to conclude, I think it is. Um, I, I, I think that the language proposed by Commissioner Ladish may be a little too precise, and therefore.
My thoughts exactly.
How about lengthy?
Something like, "Facilities to further process sanitary and septic, septic waste by combining with other materials to produce compost or fertilizer," might be more general to encompass what might be coming down the pipe. And that's, that's it.
Commissioner Ladish.
Welcome. I'm not, I mean, what you just said is very, uh, very consistent with what I was proposing. I do think, since during the past, there's been some question of some of these provisions, say, public or private facilities, and some don't, since this would be a private facility, I think we should put the phrase "public or private facility" into it. I do think that we're probably all in agreement that seventeen point four eight point oh two oh would not be a good fit for this, and that there's obviously real environmental questions, and we need to have a conditional use permit process to completely, uh, consider any such project when it's actually put before us. But I agree with, with Commissioner Rooster that, I mean, we have to decide that this is consistent with the purposes of Chapter seventeen point four eight, and that's, that's in seventeen point four eight point oh three oh J, if we're going to take this action of consistency today. And seventeen point four eight point oh one oh provides that the purpose of the PS zone is to classify lands that are used for public purposes, public. used for public purposes, public utilities, and for public agencies. So presumably, the listing for public purposes separately from public agencies indicates that the lands don't have to be used for or by public agencies in order to be used for public purposes. And that's demonstrated by several subdivisions within subdivision .030, which specifically cover public or private entities and facilities. The proposed facility, I think, carries the public purpose that has already been stated, the sanitary and septic waste disposal facility. Public purpose stated in .030B carries it at least one step further. The end result of the proposed facility is not just disposal, is a product that contributes to productive agriculture. And if even half of the attributes that the applicant would give to this product are, will play out in the real world, it would be providing, this product will be providing satisfaction of quite a bit of public purpose. And it's also been pointed out by the county representatives that it would be an economic benefit to the county. So it's, I think, clearly comes within a public purpose. So making it very clear that we are not considering now where this use would be accomplished, I think it's consistent with the purposes of Chapter 17.48, as illustrated by the examples given by 17.48.030. Now, we get to the question, we don't have a resolution before us with any particular language, and yet we are supposed to find the use to be for public purposes, consistent with the purposes of Chapter 17.48, and initiate a change in the zoning. So I think, what I'm going to do, I've, this is the elaborate language that I guess I got a little too carried away on. This is, this is a motion that I would be proposing, I better keep one copy.
Are there two parts?
So I think, as indicated in this motion that I have yet to give, I don't know that we today want to solidify exactly what language we want to have proposed as the zoning change because that would infringe on the planning director and the planning department and legal counsel. So that's why I'm suggesting that we come up with language that is, that we can say we need to include language similar to the following language, and that gives a chance to fine tune the language. But I guess I'd ask Commissioner Rooster, what changes would you suggest to this, since I think you used quite a bit of the language?
Well, I agree with your suggestion to include the phrase "public or private." So it would be similar to yours, but it would be "public or private facilities to further process sanitary and septic waste by combining with other materials produced to produce compost or fertilizer."
So let's hear from everybody else before we start wordsmithing something that we're not, this isn't the opportunity for that, really. We just want to give general direction to staff, right? So Commissioner Fisk, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, this is my first rural meeting, and it's been very interesting. I'm very grateful for the education background and knowledge of those that are here to help me through this. I feel that it's unfortunate that this information was submitted this way with a project already in mind. I feel that it clouds where we want to be able to look at the individual codes and recognize that there is a place for a project similar to this already identified in our planning, in our planning code book. So under the Zone M2, it does identify the processing of fertilizer. With the understanding that technology and innovations are going to have to change the way that we look at things and the way that we do things, and understanding from the applicant's thorough review of all of the benefits that this has and how it helps our public agency, there could possibly be an opportunity for something like this to move forward, I feel, under the condition, and conditional use with the language being changed to add that. However, I also know that if anyone was diligent in the purchase of their homes around a specific area, that they are choosing to move to that location because they have an understanding of the uses that might take place in that location, and therefore choose not to move next to an M2-zoned property because of how it can expand based on how we reviewed that zone when it was developed. The same would be true here with the public service zone that we're talking about. And so I'm still struggling with this a little bit because there is zoning that does allow this process to be able to take place. And I would have liked to have seen information identifying how this particular process fits with the parameters of the public service code.
Commissioner Parker.
Well, I believe that it is consistent. I think that there's also some synergy that could possibly help us with our GHG goals as well. And I'm definitely for projects like this. And I think that it is a good fit in this particular instance as well to add that.
So I'm in agreement with everybody that we should consider an amendment to the zoning code that would include some description of biosolids processing and composting as a potential use with a CUP. The exact wording, I would encourage us to keep relatively generic and not be overly influenced by the particular project in front of us today because there could, as Corey mentioned, you know, technology is changing. There could be other value-added products that could be made with biosolids that we're not even contemplating today. So I think as long as we keep it in the CUP realm, that we want to keep it relatively generic. And do you need a motion and a vote on this, or is this, Julie, is this just direction to staff to come back to us with something?
It's an action item, so I would, I'd definitely recommend taking a vote. It's strange, it doesn't require a resolution or findings, but it is a final action by the planning commission. It doesn't go to the board, so automatically anyway. So this is something that we would need from you as a vote in order to come back with the draft zoning amendment.
And I would say we want to be somewhat specific in that we don't want to be so broad here that we're asking for something that we really wouldn't want in the county. And that's why I put in after wastewater processing as a precedent to this processing involved here, in that this, this plant would not be doing the wastewater processing, and also that it would only be receiving materials that had already gone through wastewater processing, which I think is quite important in categorizing what this type of plant does. If we're talking about a plant that does everything, I think we're talking about it. Then, as CCWD mentioned, the first process, the wastewater processing does involve open ponds and more smells and this sort of thing. So it seems to me that we want to...
But those are already allowed on a public zoning, so...
I understand, but we're talking about an additional type of facility. I just thought that that would be a good thing to get in there. So I, yes, I'd like to just instruct the, the planning department to do the right thing, but I'm not sure that that follows what our charge is to initiate a change.
You can trust us.
But they're going to come back to us with proposed language, and we will have the opportunity at that point to have input into that language.
Right, that's true.
Is that correct?
Definitely when the zoning, normally the staff would draft a zoning amendment, and then the commission would review the language and can change it circumly.
Correct. So I'm thinking the time to spend a lot of time on getting it just right is when they come back to us with something.
Okay.
And they can even provide us some alternatives if that seems appropriate.
Alternatives, that would sound good. And I, I hesitate to think we've been talking about this all possibly happening at one stage, the proposed zoning and a conditional use permit request under whatever language we come up with for the proposed zoning. And to me, that all gets pretty murky as far as EIRs and that sort of stuff.
It would depend on how the application came in. I'm not clear as I sit here who would be applying for the zoning amendment and how, this would be a first for this type of a situation, at least since I've been here. But I will say that we do zoning, if there is a specific project application, it's possible for a single environmental document to be a zoning amendment for a specific purpose. And so a lot of that depends, you know, we're going to have to, maybe the staff's going to have to think about this a little bit. What they ask is right now from the commission is to initiate a zoning amendment that allows it in a zone that could theoretically take place any place in the county. If the zoning amendment is a, is coming with a conditional use permit application for a specific applicant, that does narrow the scope potentially of the, of the CECL document. So a lot's going to depend on how that project comes in. I don't know what the preference of the planning department is in this regard.
I think it's important that we move forward with the zoning amendment generically, completely separate from this project.
Absolutely.
Because we want it to happen whether or not this project ever comes to fruition to give opportunities to other people with innovative ideas.
Madam Chair, I totally agree because I see this as actually two separate processes. So the planning commission has to do what the planning commission has to do with allowing this use in that zone. And then the project is going to be a separate entity to it, so we don't have to kind of combine the two. Action by the planning commission, allowing this use in the zone, and then a project that complies with the, you know, the determinations of the planning commission consistent with the finding that, that the planning commission would make. So two totally separate processes.
Also, we want to be careful to not tailor our language to this project, which may or may not end up being a good fit.
We will have to decide how narrow or broad we want this exception to be in that. I think, I think the suggestion that perhaps the planning department come up with alternatives is a very good one to give us.
How many alternatives is where the cutoff is? I think maybe a three maximum?
Three.
Yeah, that would be just fine.
No more than three.
But how would that affect what environmental document would be prepared? Because we would be, we would be considering, we would be deciding one of three, but you will have already done, as I understand it, an environmental review of the effect of the zoning amendment, which might be different whether we choose one, two, or three. It's a conundrum.
Yeah, if I may clarify, the, what we're actually doing here is adding additional language to the code. We're not changing the zone.
No, no.
The zone is going to stay PS. We're actually adding language for clarification of what land uses are required in the PS zone. So I don't understand.
But an analysis of the environmental effect of that change to the language, which are generally not specific in...
Yeah. Well, we have a general plan EIR that we can always refer to, to see if we can borrow something from there to allow us to go forward.
And the question will be very relative. If the use that's being proposed to be added is less intensive, environmentally going through the appendix G factors, then the use, use is already allowed there, there might not be an enormous environmental document.
There's, so I feel like the difference between the M2 zoning and the public service zoning is that the M2 does specifically talk about the hazardous material, where it doesn't talk about dealing with that in the PS.
And this is different than fertilizer as a hazardous material because this is compost?
Right, right.
That's the distinction there.
I do think, I mean, I know this is this facility specific, but I think it can become a generic thing, that this facility would not be handling hazardous or toxic materials, but they would be handling, what do they call it?
Beyond what they already are handling.
Right. So the assumption is that when you use the word biosolids, that it's not going to be hazardous. But I'm just, what I'm pointing out is that if you don't use that language specifically that this is dealing with non-hazard, that it could end up being interpreted sometime further down the line because fertilizer does have hazardous components.
But we're talking about using biosolids. I think that's what you're trying to get to is...
I'm reading his, his motion, where the last word says fertilizer, so...
It's processing of biosolids.
But that process system could change under some other type of project that still wants the outcome to be the same as what this proposed project is showing.
So I think what Corey's trying to say is this is a compost, this is the final product. And what if somebody said, we're going to create a different sort of synthetic fertilizer using this? So we want to make sure that that's not what we're looking for. Here is a manufacturing process that is inherently different than the materials they're already handling on any given site.
Exactly. We have a zone for that.
I'm sorry.
That we have a zone already identified for that type of a process and that...
Yeah, we're not saying, come, put a fertilizer manufacturing facility here.
No, but I think by saying biosolids, we're getting away from...
Yes, biosolids should be in the language somewhere to clarify the difference between this facility and what you might get in an M2 zone, which is just a regular manufacturing zone that could use toxic.
And then there's the question of whether we want to encourage co-location with an existing wastewater treatment plant as part of this. I'm just throwing that out there because much of what makes this an appealing, not this particular, but the idea of a project like this appealing is that we're using a waste product that's being produced already on site.
But only a portion of it.
Only a portion of it, but the other materials that are coming in are more benign. And potentially solving a problem we already have with yard waste and food waste in the future.
Does it help if we not include the word fertilizer and with the word compost?
Yes.
The applicant said A, E, Q, compost, and fertilizer.
I'm not sure that it is classified as fertilizer. Horticulture is...
Yeah, is another form of compost, but I think we can work on the technicalities of the terminology.
I was going to say, we can always say compost and fertilizer, in parentheses, no synthetic added... additives, but things like that.
Exactly. Thank you.
So what direction do you need, Mr. Planning Director? Just, you proceed and give us a couple of alternatives?
We need a motion of the Planning Commission basically adding or proposing to add this, modifying 1748030 to add a use similar to what is in your motion to the zoning code. Or if you determine, if you determine that this is not a use that is subject to conditional use, then 1748020. But I think from the evidence we've heard so far, it seems like 030 is perhaps the avenue that we want to go. So that's the direction we want the Planning Commission to give us so that we can now take the next steps.
By, in the draft motion that I had, I said language similar to, so that should give you room to play around with...
Absolutely.
...with these components.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to make my motion.
Throw it out there.
So pursuant to Section 17.48.030J, I move that the commission find the following use to be for public purposes, consistent with the uses stated in Section 17.48.030 and with the purposes of Chapter 17.48. And that the commission initiate a change in Chapter 17.48 for inclusion of language similar to the following as a use under Section 17.48.030L. Quote, "After wastewater processing, public or private facilities that conduct further processing of biosolids and combining them with bulking agents to produce grade A-E-Q compost and fertilizer."
We need a second.
I would love to second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. Any further discussion? Would you like to amend anything, Commissioner Wooster?
Well, I think the phrase after wastewater processing is superfluous and that's already a conditionally permitted use in the code anyway. The word biosolids is not used in the code as it now sits. The phrase sanitary and septic waste is, so I would substitute that. I would not use the phrase bulking agents because I think it's too limiting. I would just say other materials and I would strike grade A and I would strike the words and fertilizer, so it would read, "public or private facilities to conduct further processing of sanitary and septic waste by combining them with other materials to produce compost." Period. That would be my suggested amendment.
I, I think it's important we have biosolids in there. I mean, with the...
Could be in parentheses after...
...septic waste is straight from the septic tank. Here's your septic waste. And I think that's, that's a completely different proposition. And sanitary waste is directly from the sewer pipes. That's not what we were considering today. And I think, I...
So could we say biosolids resulting from sanitary and septic waste?
That would be fine.
Yes?
Yeah.
And you could also say combining them with other non-hazardous materials.
Exactly, thank you.
Yeah, I think we need to make that clarification because, I mean, what separates this process or this use from the use you would have in an M2 zone is that we're using basically non-volatile, non-toxic materials, as you've heard the evidence, as opposed to if it was just a manufacturing process, there's no control over what goes into, what gets mixed into the fertilizer.
So are we all comfortable with the new language before I call for the vote?
Could you state what the new language is?
Julie's got it over there, I think.
A motion to add as an additional use in 1748, sorry, pursuant to Section 1748.030J, Commissioner Wooster moves that the commissions, commission find the following use to be for public purposes, consistent with the uses stated in Section 1748.030 and with the purposes of Chapter 1748. And that the commission initiate a change in Chapter 1748 for inclusion of language similar to public or private facilities to conduct further processing of biosolids by combining them with other non-hazardous materials to produce compost and fertilizer.
No. That's what we just modified.
Sorry, compost.
Compost, period.
Why are we eliminating fertilizer when that's what the applicant said? He'd said compost and fertilizer. So are we going to eliminate this so that they can't do, if we approve their project, we can say, oh, but you can do the compost, but not the fertilizer? This is not making sense to me.
I thought we were going to add non-synthetic in parentheses after fertilizer.
That would be fine.
Yes.
I think we're getting, again, caught up in the weeds here.
That's why I say similar to.
Yes, exactly. So the concern was that biosolids will need to either be defined or biosolids resulting from the treatment of sanitary and septic waste.
After wastewater processing.
You could just, instead of actually giving the language now, I think we have a general picture, you could just say similar to the use described by, what is it, North Bay Logistics? No, okay.
Do not want to tie it to...
But similar to the use described today, right? I mean, we...
I think that's fine.
I basically just, we want to allow processing of biosolids to create a marketable product, i.e. compost, non-synthetic fertilizer. There may be something else in the future that we're not, but it's under a CUP, so we would have to determine whether it fit that description anyway, right?
I think the language can be further noodled at the time. I think if we just said...
Yes, but for our resolution today, that's the general direction, correct?
Well, let's state what our general direction is. I think Julie was getting close.
Public or private facilities to conduct further processing of biosolids derived from sanitary and septic wastewater treatment?
No.
Just wait.
No, that's where the biosolids are derived from.
It's biosolids by combining them with other non-hazardous materials to produce compost and/or non-synthetic fertilizer.
That's pretty good.
Okay, it could be similar to that.
Or similar product. Yeah, or a similar product.
I think I understand the motion.
Perfect.
Or similar environmentally beneficial products. So even if you don't mention compost or fertilizer, similar environmentally beneficial products is the outcome. So we can just fill in the blanks, whatever that is. Environmental beneficial is the key thing and also the fact that they are non-toxic. Those are the two factors.
Non-hazardous. I think environmentally beneficial is so big and people are going to argue so much about the definition, we might want to be careful...
You're going to be the word doctor here, so you've got a lot of things similar with it.
I'm sure that there are other jurisdictions who have battled this and come up with some language that we might be able to take a look at.
Well, he said there's only six in California, so...
Take a look at what enables.
Do some research.
Allows, yes. So is everybody good with their motion to this somewhat amended motion? Are we ready to vote or do we want to hear the motion restated?
I think we restated it enough.
It feels like it.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Wooster's motion, so...
Well, Commissioner Latish's motion, original motion with proposed modifications by the entire commission.
Well, that's the language that Julie did. I think it gives a working model.
All in favor? Aye.
Who's going to second it?
Oh, sorry, it's Saturday 7th.
We're good.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes 5-0-0. Thank you, everyone, for your persistence. I think I have got an agenda under here. Are there any commissioner reports? Planning Director report?
For the benefit of brevity, I would say no report.
Are we, are we going to have an agenda of the next scheduled meeting date or...
Yes, actually, we're approaching bringing, well, there are two things that are pending at this particular time. One is the return of the GHG reduction plan that has now been in the hands of the consultant for quite some time. So when that is going to come back before the Planning Commission, you know, I would let you know, we'll have to give adequate notice. But in addition to that, we're getting to the point where I want to start bringing back the zoning code update. Now, I want to bring those back only if it's the only item on the agenda because it is going to include a lot of discussion and I don't think we're going to get through them in one, in one meeting. So those are the two things on the horizon and there's a, there's a few other planning projects here and there that are still coming up. September 8 definitely is going to be whiskey flats, no, not whiskey farms.
Whiskey slide.
Whiskey slide.
Whiskey slide zoning amendment.
Yeah, the whiskey slide zoning amendment is going to be coming up September 8. We have to pull it because of CEQA notification and so on and so forth. So we're going to have a Planning Commission meeting on the 8th.
Well, that's the date that goes in the minutes then when it's coming back.
Right.
Although I don't know that we knew it was going to be that exact date at that time. Okay, if there is nothing else, we are adjourned at 11:04. Thank you, everybody and anybody online listening.